Good morning. It is 9:00 a.m. I will call the Tuesday, September 2nd, 2025 meeting of the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners to order. Couple of announcements, the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners reserves the right to enter closed session at any time as necessary to discuss the agenda item currently before the board. We also reserve the right to take agenda items out of order for the convenience of the parties involved. We do follow the Open Meetings Act, which is posted with amendments at the entrance to the room. At 9:15, we will recess as the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners and convene as the Lincoln County Board of Equalization, also following the Open Meeting Act with amendments. Our first order of business is to open with prayer. Commissioner Brunz, if you would do us the honors, please.
Yep. Join me if you're so inclined, please. Heavenly Father, Lord, we come to you with thanksgiving and humbleness in our hearts. We just ask that you guide us through today's meeting, Lord, so that the decisions that we make are in the best interests of those that we serve here in Lincoln County, for the greater good of our communities that we serve and that are pleasing in your eye. Lord, we ask that you just lay your protective hand over those here locally that work hard day in and day out, put their lives on the line from our first responders, our law enforcement personnel, those that work hard to protect our way of life and protect our freedoms here locally. Lord, I also ask that you just lay your protective shield, your wings of grace, over our military personnel, Lord, those that are serving here and abroad to protect the freedoms that we hold near and dear as Americans. Lord, I just ask that you continue to provide abundant blessings to our community, Lord, here in Lincoln County. We thankful for the moisture that we've received, we're thankful for all the good things that come our way, and we know that they come from you. In Jesus' name I pray, amen.
Next, I will seek a motion to approve the minutes of last week's meeting held on August 25th, 2025, if you have had an opportunity to review.
Make a motion to approve the minutes regarding the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners meeting held August 25th, 2025.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any corrections or questions? Roll call, please.
Brunz.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Hugley.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Ruler.
Item three, claims and treasurers receipts.
Make a motion, we approve the claims and treasures receipts as presented, and as always, have the right to make a correction if we find something that appears to be an error. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Hugley.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Brunz.
Aye.
Ruler.
Now, we will review, receive and order file the fee report submitted by the county sheriff.
Chair, I would move that we receive an order filed, the fee report submitted by the county sheriff, in the amount of $1,679.15. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? I will just note that this is for all of us to sign. Roll call, please.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Hugley.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Brunz.
Aye.
Ruler.
Final item on the consent agenda is to authorize the chair to sign the right-of-way application submitted by Great Plains Communications.
Good morning.
Good morning, Jason.
Jason Schultz, Lincoln County Highway Superintendent. This permit is from Great Plains and has for a fiber installation over on West Park Road, west of Sutherland. Has been reviewed and no objections from the roads department.
There is a permitting fee check attached to the application for $191.50. Is, this is going down somebody's private drive or class counting?
No. 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 Yeah, it's West Park Road.
Are there other, are there other residents on that road?
Uh, down at the end where they're going to, there's a few right there.
A cluster.
There's two or three, yeah.
And it'll take it into all of them, it's not just for one residence?
They'll probably put a hub in that they can choose to tap into.
Yeah, yep.
This map looks quite similar to one we've looked at the last couple weeks. Is this south of the river?
Uh, no, it's north.
North.
Well, it's between, between them, actually. It's just right, um, right west of the village.
Okay.
Yeah.
My motion to authorize the chair to sign the right-of-way permit submitted by Great Plains Communication.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other questions or discussion? Roll call, please.
Brunz.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Hugley.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Ruler.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jason.
Good morning. Morning, Your Honor.
She hasn't pulled the plug, has she?
Uh-huh.
She hasn't pulled the plug, has she?
Uh-huh. Good morning. Morning, Your Honor.
She hasn't pulled the plug, has she? Uh-huh. 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 She hasn't pulled the plug, has she?[1238.23] our meeting last week held on Monday, August 25 of 2025.
Chair, it would be my motion that we approve those minutes regarding the Lincoln County Board of Equalization meeting held on August 25 of 2025. Second?
We have a motion and a second. Discussion? Roll call, please.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Hugley.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Burns.
Aye.
Uller.
Aye.
Next, we will consider the certificates of correction and refund submitted by the county assessor. Good morning, Pat. Deputy County Assessor Pat Collins indicates that we have none. Our next item is motor vehicle tax exemption applications is submitted by the county treasurer. Kent, would you like to do yours first while Jay goes through the rest of his?
Form 457 from the American National Red Cross is before me, applying for an exemption for a Ram ProMaster 3500 van, 2021 year model. It is used to transport employees and supplies to blood drives. This has been reviewed and recommended for approval by Treasurer Sherri Newton. This would be my motion to approve as well.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Any questions or discussion? Roll call, please.
Williams.
Aye.
Hugley.
Aye.
Burns.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Uller.
Aye.
Not read into this before, so it's going to be a question for you, Tyler, and you can give me a yea or nay and I'll go read the way, but we've got like five pages, there's probably 25 or 30 vehicles from the American, the North Platte Opportunity Center that are all have the same thing, used to transport the needs of 80 individuals in the North Platte Opportunity Center. May I make a blanket motion to approve those rather than reading each one, do you think? Or however you'd like me to do it, I have no problem either way?
Well, I would take one motion, since they're all for the same reason.
Okay.
They all dated the same.
Um, no. Different dates on the applications?
Uh-oh, but it's not the same application.
I take a three out of one here on 8/6, so I'm going to read it separately from my 8/11, so how's that?
I think.
Go for it, chair, minute. What would you, was that work?
That works for me.
Okay. I'm going to make a motion that we approve the exemption of a Chevy Malibu and a Ford Taurus for the North Platte Opportunity Center. All these vehicles are used for the transportation needs of the 75 individuals. It says both disabled and not disabled. It would be my motion to approve. It's recommended for approval by Sherri Newton. Second?
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Hugley.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Burns.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Uller.
Aye.
I would also make a motion that we approve the application for a number of different vehicles for the North Platte Opportunity Center. The same reading as all vehicles are used exclusively for transportation, the needs of our 80 individuals that we serve. North Platte Opportunity Center supply transportation for eight group homes and six-day service homes. They are all recommended for approval by Sherri Newton, and the application date was 8/11. Second?
We're still approved.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Hugley.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Burns.
Aye.
Uller.
Aye.
That was our final item for the Board of Equalization. We will adjourn at 9:20 as the Lincoln County Board of Equalization and reconvene as the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners. Our 9:20 agenda item is discuss and consider special designated liquor permits submitted by the North Platte J.C.'s and the United States Junior Chamber of Commerce for a wedding reception to be held at the farmhouse located on East State Farm Road for September 27, 2025.
Becky, they do have a license, correct?
They'll have, they're here to represent themselves. This is their, it's a nonprofit, so it's different.
So, do we have anyone here to represent the applicants?
Yes.
If you would like to come up, sign in with your name and address and then announce yourself for the public record. Pardon?
Morgan.
Morgan, good morning, Morgan. Thank you for joining us. So, what, what organization do you represent?
The North Platte J.C.'s.
Very good. And you guys have a liquor permit?
Yeah.
So, Becky, it appears that there's a couple of things missing off of here, needs to be notarized, and that can be done here in the courthouse.
Yes, you can do it.
Very good.
Yeah. The diagram, little diagram attached that I can see.
So, there was an area on the very last page for a diagram of the, of the property where the event is going to be, okay, taking place.
We should have helped them move that, and they brought it in. I don't have to discuss that. We won't say when they brought it in.
What's the timeline here?
They have till 27, so we've got some time.
Got some time.
But, I mean, their semantics, we can get that completed, then we should have had that done before.
There is just a building out there, no fence that I am aware of, is that correct?
I believe so, yeah.
It does indicate, I believe.
Just indoor, correct?
That it's all indoors.
Yeah, so it would just be indoors.
Oh, just indoor, okay. I don't have anything. Here, sorry, here.
Also, the application indicates that you will be checking IDs and then using wristbands.
Yes, correct.
Okay. So, where do we go from here, Becky, since?
If it's indoors, it probably don't need the diagram, just probably needs to be stated.
Yeah, that's what I was.
Okay, needs to be stated. But it's going to be indoors, that's what I would do. So, but we can get it notarized for ourselves. You can approve it, we can finish the rest of it.
Okay.
In the future, I will make sure they know that that needs to be done, or know, even know.
Okay. On the front, it does say indoor area to be licensed in Lincoln with, and they filled that part out, and they didn't put anything for outdoor, so.
And on the outdoors, it says must submit a diagram.
Okay, okay. Very good.
Where they don't have that, I wouldn't think that we would need to make them submit the diagram.
No, it'll be one for them.
Captain, are you, Captain, do you have anything to say?
We have no objection to this at all.
Thank you. The North Platte J.C.'s, I've been to numerous events where you guys have done amazing work in controlling everything, and I'm sure this will be no different.
Yes.
It will go off without a hitch, so.
And before you were born, it was North Platte J.C.'s and Mrs. J.C.'s.
Mrs. J.C.'s.
A bit of historical value there.
A bit of historical value, right, Yuri?
Absolutely.
All of the.
Try to forget history sometime.
All of the J.C.'s that will be working here have been through the server training.
Yes.
Okay, very good.
Has he been through the server?
Except that fellow. I don't think he went through it.
Not yet.
He's protesting.
All right. I would seek a motion.
It would be my motion to approve at our level and send forward a positive recommendation for a special designated liquor permit submitted by the North Platte J.C.'s and the United States Junior Chamber of Commerce for wedding reception to be held at the farmhouse located on East State Farm Road on September 27, 2025 to the Nebraska Liquor Control Commission.
Second?
And this is just for me to sign, correct, Becky?
Yes.
The chair.
I'll, I'll give it to her, and she can take it down to my office.
Okay.
You can notarize more of her money.
And I can go ahead and sign up before the notarization. All right. Very good. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Burns.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Hugley.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Uller.
Aye.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
It is 9:30. We will now have a presentation by the Daughters of the American Revolution on Liberty Day and Ringing of the Bells for 2025. Good morning, ladies. If you would both sign in on our roster there, name and address, and then announce yourselves for the public record. Good morning, Marie.
Did you hit the button down in front there? Thank you.
Awesome.
I am Mary Agler. I am the Regent of our Sioux Lookout Chapter here in North Platte. I'd like to tell you a little bit about our organization.
Mary, if you would like, let's wait till Marie gets signed in and have her announce herself also, just for the record.
Okay. I am Marie Gerch, and I am the Register of Daughters of the American Revolution.
Very good, thank you.
I'll begin again.
Nothing, nothing like a reset.
Sure. I'm Mary Agler, the Regent of our Sioux Lookout Chapter of Daughters of the American Revolution here in North Platte, and I'd like to tell you a little bit about our organization. In May 1916, a group of North Platte women met on the courthouse lawn and discussed the possibility of organizing a DAR chapter. Sioux Lookout Chapter was organized on November 22, 1916, with 19 applications that had been submitted for membership and were approved. The name Sioux Lookout was chosen in December to commemorate the historic hill which had been used by Indians, settlers, and cavalry as an observation place overlooking Lincoln County. In your upper-left corner of the tapestry depicts our statue. The Sioux Lookout Chapter received their charter from National Society, Daughters of the American Revolution, on February 28, 1918. Daughters of the American Revolution is a lineage-based volunteer society whose main focus is historic preservation, education, and patriotism. The members strive to volunteer in their communities to serve these three guidelines. And I'll address the first, historic preservation. I would say the longstanding initiative there is our DAR Cabin Museum, which is now located at the Lincoln County Historical Museum property. It used to be a memorial park, and they were there to have it open and display the historical artifacts to the public. It has gone, undergone renovation most recently. Education, basically, we sponsor a scholarship, for Good Citizen Scholarship, every year through our chapter. And we have 11 schools currently within the Lincoln County area that our chairperson solicits the, the essays from, and then one is chosen and sent to state. And our patriotism, we sponsor programs for our veterans here. We send to our active military Christmas greetings of one sort or another. We choose that particular item or whatever each year. And then Constitution Week is an American observance to commemorate the original signing of the Constitution in 1787. Bells were used to call people together to hear the first public reading of our new Constitution on September 17, 1787. Currently, bells are rung across the nation each September 17 at 3:00 PM Central Time to reenact this occasion. And I will now turn it over to Marie.
Okay. So, as you heard right from the beginning, we've actually been associated with the courthouse, with the premises, by meeting on the lawn. And recently, in the last few years, we have had our event over here by the Fourth Street area, and we have chosen in the last three years approximately to be having it over here on the south due to the traffic and so forth. So, just a little bit about what Constitution Week is, to ring the bell of everyone here that might not know it, and it's kind of an educational thing that I was made aware of. The United States Constitution, America's most important document, stands as a testament to the tenacity of Americans throughout history to maintain their liberties, freedoms, and inalienable rights. And Constitution Week is celebrated annually during the week of September 17 through the 23rd to commemorate its history importance and bringing attention to how it serves still today. The celebration of Constitu, of the Constitution was started by the Daughters of the American Revolution. In 1955, DAR petitioned Congress to set aside September 17 through 23 annually to be dedicated for the observance of Constitution Week. The resolution was later adopted by the US Congress and signed into public law on August 2, 1956 by President Dwight D. Eisenhower. The DAR also erected a statue that is built in tribute to the Constitution of the United States. DAR Constitution Hall, which is a performing arts center, opened in 1929. And the aims of Constitution Week celebrations are to emphasize citizens' responsibilities for protecting and defending the Constitution, inform people that the Constitution is the basis for America's great heritage and foundation for our way of life, and encourage the study of the historical events which lead to the framing of the Constitution in September of 1787. So, we have to kind of keep that in mind, the separation of 1776 versus 1787. Bells Across America is an annual celebration of the signing of the US Constitution. Participants gather to ring bells much as the church bells of Philadelphia rang out when the US Constitution was first signed at 4:00 PM on September 17, 1787. And I would like to pass out, if you would like to take one, that is a reminder of it, and it has the preamble. And if you've been walking around the visitors' area in our courthouse, we put a display up a, a week ago with the Constitution and just some information with Constitution books available for people. And so, we welcome the presence at the courthouse, and we encourage you to be able to participate in our Constitution Week of Ringing of the Bells. It will start over here on the lawn at 2:30 on the 17th of September, and Michaela Uller is our speaker. And we will conclude the program at 3:00 PM with the Ringing of the Bells Across America that starts 4:00 PM Eastern Time. And along with that, I would also like to bring your attention to another event that is happening with our group, and that is, we are producing a fundraiser or having help with a fundraiser for the cabin to get some of the displays back in, and that is happening at Pizza Ranch on September 8 from 5 to 8:00 PM. So, we are going to be best girls. And that's going to be an interesting little proposition, but anyway. And the gift cards are also, if they are purchased during that time period, those count for our donation from Pizza Ranch. So, we're very excited that they came on board and are helping us as well.
Very nice. Marie, can you tell me that date again for the?
It is September 8 from 5 to 8:00 PM at the Pizza Ranch. Are there any questions?
No, thank you for what you do, and the display, I made a comment to the gal at the PBX office last week, very nice display, very informative.
Thank you. Kind of comes from my old days as being a teacher.
There you go. That's what I said.
You know it, Chris.
I do.
Was Chris one of your students?
Uh, no.
Not directly.
Not directly.
His mother babysat for him.
Very nice.
Lot of good history there.
Yeah, there is.
Some of it is BJ Day.
Yeah.
That's today.
Yeah.
That's right, yeah.
But yeah, so I'm just excited that, you know, we're kind of back in the loop here with the courthouse and have been visiting with Michaela about that. And it actually started here with our organization way back in 1916. So, we do have some history, and we welcome you to attend.
Very good.
Thank you.
I had some questions originally, but your presentation covered all of them, so I really appreciate that.
Well, we're glad.
And thank you for inviting me to be part of the presentation that day.
Very welcome.
Just a, a fun fact, I was in Philadelphia in the first part of July, and we actually went to Constitution Hall. So, even though I feel like I paid pretty close attention in school and when we were going over the Constitution and everything that it meant for our country, it was really impactful to be there, and I learned quite a bit. I learned more today, part of your presentation. So, with that said, Lincoln County does have Government Day coming up in April, and my ask of, of the Daughters of the American Revolution, would you guys be interested in coming to the courthouse that day and participating in Government Day and sharing the Constitution with the students as they come through the building?
Yeah.
When in April?
God, my word.
All right. Do you have a date yet, or?
Tammy, I believe, has a date. Is it April 8, Tammy?
Um, I'll get back with you. I think it's the 10.
The 10.
Okay.
So, first, first part of April, and we're always looking for volunteers to participate in that, and I think it'd be a great opportunity. Do you guys go into the schools and present for the students?
We have in some of the parochial schools in the past, and I made contact with an eighth-grade history teacher that used to be on my team and gave her some information as far as websites that they could use because they do teach, apparently, the Revolutionary War and things in eighth grade at Adams. And so, I have not heard from her or when she's actually doing that. And I also might make note, besides the Daughters of the American Revolution, we do have the Sons of the American Revolution as well, and they dedicated the Liberty Tree out there. Yes.
Yes.
And they will be in attendance as well.
And down through history, back, oh, I would say probably in the 50s and the 60s, the Sioux Lookout Chapter DAR ladies did go into the schools every year. We didn't have the bell ringing activity at that time, but during Constitution Week, they went into the schools and put on various programs geared to the age of the classroom that they were doing. I know that, I believe it was in 2021, maybe, our Constitution Week Committee that year went to the North Platte Public High School, and I believe Mike Jacobson was their speaker, and they spoke to an assembly, so the entire assembly of the high school was in the room for that. So, we kind of have history of going into the classroom or into the schools themselves for things.
Very nice. Well, I think it would be very beneficial to our high school kids as they're coming through the courthouse and learning.
Right.
Because the Constitution affects the work that we do here every Monday morning. We, we follow a lot of the things. It always amazes me how insightful our forefathers were when they were laying out the groundwork for the Constitution, how it still affects us today. So, if you guys would like to participate, I, we would love to have you.
It is April.
April 8.
April 8.
So, April 8.
Okay.
And it's, it's pretty much an all-day event.
We'll discuss and get back to you on.
Okay.
Your expectations.
Very good. I have your guys' contact information.
You do?
So.
Thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
You are welcome.
One final question before you depart.
Yeah.
The Commissioners does have a Mugs in the Morning radio spot the morning following our meetings. Would you guys be interested in joining us for Mugs tomorrow morning?
Uh, we could. What time would be needed?
Eight o'clock, eight o'clock at the radio station.
Be there at 8:00 or?
Be, be, I, I get there just a freckle before 8:00, so sometimes we go on right at 8:00 and a little after.
Eight oh five.
Eight oh five-ish.
Is it kind of just a question and answer, or?
It's just a casual, casual conversation.
Yeah.
We can do casual conversation.
We go over what we did in the meeting and.
We could do that.
It'll get it.
Actually, Chris has the radio spot tomorrow morning, so I'm.
Oh, well, we'll.
Superstepping just a freckle.
Okay. We will see you there.
Sounds great.
And that is over by Sherman Williams, is that correct?
Yep.
Yes, right next door.
Okay.
All right.
We'll be there.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
So much for that spot you already lined up. We talked.
Well, there's room for two, doesn't need to be just one.
I don't know, I, I welcome it. I don't know. I, I welcome it.
It is nine forty-five. The agenda item before us is Discuss and Consider Resolution Number Twenty Twenty-Five-Dash-Eighteen in support of Union Pacific Railroad keeping positions domiciled at Bailey Yard. I am the one that requested the resolution be drafted. Our Deputy County Attorney Tyler Volkmer did a lot of research, and there's a lot of historic value in the resolution. I, I just felt with recent news releases, lots of outreach to me, and I believe Commissioner Brunz has also had residents reach out to him with concerns about possible relocating positions that are currently out of the Bailey Yard to either Omaha or possibly another location. And so I thought it was important for us, for our citizens and our residents to show our support, not just for the workforce that works out of Bailey Yard, but also for the, for the railroad. They've been a longtime great partner with Lincoln County. I believe if you look at the historical story behind Lincoln County and North Platte, Union Pacific picked this location because it's strategic in the Midwest of the United States. We're very proud of our long relationship with Union Pacific Railroad and the loyalty that they have had to our community and our employees, and the loyalty that we in turn have showed to them. So the resolution is just an affirmation of Lincoln County's commitment to supporting our Union Pacific employees that are domiciled out of Bailey Yard. So if anybody else has anything to add?
I would just point out that, you know, we're extremely grateful for the relationship that we do have with Union Pacific, both the company and the employees. They're a vital part to our economy here locally, and losing one job is something that we should, we should be making sure that we're voicing caution with to the overall company, let alone the number that is, is being bantered about. So I know that this is probably something that is not imminent, but the fact that it is in discussion, I think Commissioner Wohler, I'm right in line with you, it's something that we should make sure that the employee base here locally knows that we support them and are doing everything we can to ensure that those jobs stay here locally because they are so important to our economy here and the overall community.
Thank you, Commissioner Brunz. I agree. The jobs that are anchored here in Lincoln County aren't just numbers on a roster. They represent livelihoods, families, economic stability for our entire county. And I have had many conversations with Union Pacific representatives and also Smart TD. And while I don't think this is something that's going to happen in the next couple of months or even this year, I felt like it was important for us to again declare our concern and our support for our local employees. I would hate to see any of these jobs move to another location. I also understand that the railroad is a business, and they have to make decisions based on what they feel is best for their business. But for me, I just felt like it was a, a nice message to send to our workforce and maybe would help calm some of the concern.
You know, United States Postal Service is a business. There was a, a large outcry, I guess, of support locally in the last year or so, including Mr. Lobby and other people in the media. That made a difference. So I hear your points and total agreement.
Very good.
Plus, everything that we're doing in other aspects with regard to trying to grow our economy, my hope that economic growth that we're going to see here locally only increases the demand for those jobs to stay here, so I think that this is a small thing that we can be doing.
I agree. I'm just going to point out some, some of the information that Attorney Volkmer put into the resolution. It starts by saying, "In eighteen sixty-six, Union Pacific Railroad built the railroad town of North Platte to support its rapid westward construction of the Transcontinental Railroad. To this day, no community is more emblematic of or historically tied to Union Pacific Railroad than North Platte, Nebraska. Lincoln County Board of Commissioners recognizes that Union Pacific Railroad's significance within Lincoln County has only grown in the last hundred and fifty-nine years since North Platte's founding." So Bailey Yards is a symbol of our region's resilience, work ethic, and strategic importance in national rail logistics. So Tyler did a great job in pointing out the importance of Union Pacific Railroad to us and the importance to our workforce here, so.
I think that that next sentence is, is something important to point out as well. Lincoln County Board of Commissioners wholeheartedly agree with the Union Pacific Railroad's own words from 2012 that Bailey Yard is the economic barometer of America.
Very good.
Madam Chair, are you ready for a motion?
I am.
I'd make a motion that we approve Resolution Number Twenty Twenty-Five Eighteen in support of the Union Pacific Railroad keeping its operations domicile at Bailey Yard.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? I would just like to say that I think it would be beneficial for all boards and organizations that support our workforce here in Lincoln County to join us in sending either a resolution or a letter of support to Union Pacific Railroad supporting our workforce. I do know that the, the Nebraska International Port of the Plains will be discussing it, and I would like to see other organizations follow our lead and offer this support. If there's nothing else, roll call.
Hugley?
Aye.
Weems?
Aye.
Brunz?
Aye.
Woodruff?
Aye.
Wohler?
Aye. Thank you, everyone. I appreciate the support.
I think it doesn't specify, but I'm wondering if. Hook up please. To put them to the power grid, and I'm wondering if that isn't included in here, but not detail. Oh, water much nicer. Oh, that would be a little bit of a backflow there or something like that stuff.
It is nine fifty-five. The item before us is Discuss and Consider Setting September twenty-second, twenty twenty-five at eleven AM for public hearing to receive comments on the proposed twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six fiscal year Lincoln County budget. Becky, would you like to speak to this?
This is the date that was set on the calendar that Susan Malina and I had picked, and then we put it on the calendar for you guys, so as far as I know, that's the date we will be doing the public hearing.
We'll be ready by then?
You will be.
When is the, when is the joint public hearing?
September. The joint public hearing is September seventeenth at six PM at, at the College Theater.
Okay. I was just making sure that this date was after that.
Yes, yes.
Madam Chair, I'd move that we set September twenty-second, twenty twenty-five at eleven AM for public hearing to receive comments on the proposed twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six fiscal year Lincoln County budget.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other questions or discussion? Roll call, please.
Brunz?
Aye.
Woodruff?
Aye.
Hugley?
Aye.
Weems?
Aye.
Wohler?
Aye. With that, I am going to jump ahead to hear concerns from elected officials, department heads, or their representatives. Jason?
Jason Schultz, Lakeview County Highway Superintendent. Uh, just wanted to give you a couple of quick updates on a few things we have going on in the Roads Department. So the closure we had out on Platte Valley and Parkway, we did receive our culvert out there late last week, and they're working on installation out there today. Don't have an opening date yet, but it should be here within the next couple of days.
Jason, what size was that?
Uh, it was a seventy-two inch.
Thank you.
Yep.
Seventy-two round or oval?
Uh, oval.
Thank you.
Yep. Also, we have our other asphalt project that we're starting. Well, actually, today the contractor will be on site, probably tomorrow or Thursday. They're going to start on North Brady Road, so I don't know if you guys seen that notice go out, but just wanted to let you know we're starting there. We'll get that portion done, and then there'll be a little bit of a lag before they get to the rest of the project.
And so how much do we have to do? How many days of asphalt work do we have? How many miles?
Uh, there's, in total, I think there's around eleven.
Quite a bit of work.
There's five miles out there that they'll probably be about a week to complete that of workday work. And then the other ones, I don't have a date on those yet, but as soon as I do, I'll let you guys know on those.
Okay, so we need to get them started sooner than later so that, I know they're not built up for hauls, but even tarp, you know, it makes a heck of a difference.
Yeah, yep. No, that's why.
Consider where they're at.
That's why there's going to be a little bit of a lag, because they're actually going to move their plant.
Yeah.
So they're going to do that portion while they're pretty close to their plant right now, and then they're going to move it and.
Got you.
Complete the rest of it.
Thank you.
So. And then also still working on some funding applications for a bridge improvement program grant right now, so I'll probably be coming back to you guys here pretty soon, maybe for letter of support, and to go over all the details of that, so just a heads up that that's kind of, we've been working on that for a little while too, so.
The funding grant for what, Jason?
Uh, for replacing a bridge on the South Channel, just south of Brady.
Thank you.
Yep. It's in pretty rough shape, so, all right.
I appreciate your department going after those grant funds too. It's going to be very important.
Yeah.
That we seek all sorts of funding opportunities that are available.
State highway, correct, that it's on?
No.
Uh, no. Nope. It's past the limits of the state. It's actually on the county, on the county road there.
That's on Central's irrigation canal?
No, it's actually on the South Channel of the river.
Oh, okay.
But it's, it's south of the I-80 where the cutoff is there.
Well, I don't, I'm not talking I-80, I'm talking that road going into town.
No.
It's a state spur.
It's, the spur goes from the interstate to town north.
Right.
This is south of the interstate.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, wrong way.
Not on the river, it's south, it's on the, just on the South Channel.
Thank you. I'm, I'm, wrong direction. Thank you, Jason.
Yep. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Jason. Captain Newton, do you have anything for us today? Very good. We will do Lincoln County Commissioner Committee reports.
I would have you look at the Telegraph. There's a couple of grand awards from Visit North Platte that are quite substantial, that are of a benefit for tourism in Lincoln County, but also both of them have a significant impact on local residents as well, so have a look at that article in the Telegraph.
And what were they during?
There was a word of about forty-six thousand dollars to the baseball complex, and then another award to the Frederickson House.
To re-roof it. To re-roof it, I think.
Re-roof it for, I don't remember the exact amount, twenty-six thousand or something like that. Which interesting enough was an early nineteen hundreds Sears kit house that cost a little over two thousand dollars. But it's one of the, Jim tells us, it's one of the key features at the museum for not only visitors but for local folks here in North Platte. So it's good to get that work done as far as preserving that structure.
Very good. Thank you for that update. I did attend my last session of the Institute of Excellence. It was our only in-person session. We had done everything else via Zoom, and so it was nice to make those connections. I appreciate you guys supporting my going to that. I did learn a lot of things that I will bring back and share with the board. And so I'm glad to have that behind me, and I really appreciate the University of Nebraska partnering with NACO to help get, further our education and knowledge through the Institute of Excellence. So I am, I am officially graduated. I feel a little smarter now. Just a couple of notes. Tom House from Colonial Insurance will be in our building Thursday of this week, September fourth. So for any county employees that want to come in and visit with Tom, he will be set up here in the County Commissioners Room. And I believe that's all the announcements I have. We do have a need for a closed session today, and so I would seek a motion for us to go into closed session.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to go into closed session for the interest of the public's good with regard to the county's long-term investments.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to go into closed session. at ten oh four, um, for the public good of the county's long-term investments. Those staying in the room will be the five commissioners. Uh, our county treasurer, Sherry Newton. Our county clerk, Becky Russell. Our, um, accountant, Susan Maline. And from the clerk's office, Cheryl Moore. Roll call please.
Brenz.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Hugley.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Woller.
Aye.
Okay.
Microphone Joe, I would seek a motion to come out of closed session.
Make a motion to come into open session.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to return to open session. Any discussion? Roll call please.
Brens.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Hugley.
Aye.
Okay, now we are to the 2025-2026 Lincoln County Budget Work Session. Becky, my first question is, we got back, Tammy sent out, or maybe you sent out, a request to all departments to go over their budgets again with a fine-tooth comb. I think we had six departments that submitted reductions.
Yes, and one of them actually is that the registered deeds actually ended up zeroing out because she moved it around rather than... I did get one from Noxious Weeds this morning too, so that is not in it.
There still are some trickling in. So, what does that do for us for our goal of... Were we at 1.8 or 1.3 million we're trading?
1.3. There was 475 or 450,000 was it? It was 450,000 in revenue for that lost Monitas that was not in on the revenue side that Susan put in on the revenue side.
That's in what you got today that's included in it.
Yes, so we're...
Okay.
We went from 1.8 to 1.34.
All right, so that helped out, 400,000. And then with this, with all of the reductions that were submitted, where does that leave us at?
About, I dropped about 150,000 off. Now, the IT department did communicate that some of the stuff that they really need to do, it's like more like a necessity than a need or a want, he is going to have to increase that a little bit because he estimated low. And when he actually got the actual estimates in, some of that stuff was a little higher. So, he already told me he's going to have to raise this a little bit for IT.
For IT?
Yeah.
Did he give an idea of how much?
He didn't. He didn't.
When will he have that figure for us?
He probably hasn't. He could probably give him this week, but he just, he just wanted me to know that he, that was, that came in higher than I'd anticipated.
The miscellaneous general was one of the larger increases. And could you tell us why or what necessitated that increase?
Because of the transfers.
To roads is primarily 2.2 million had to be transferred, more is transferred to roads and that is out of this like this general.
So, it's the last two items on that budget.
And roads had increased, I think, 18%. I believe if I'm remembering my numbers when I went through there this year, which I thought was a huge increase myself. Sorry, Chris, I will send you.
So, if we bond projects, is there a need for those transfers? Or less transfers?
Well, we'll still have to take care of the self-funded insurance, so they'll have to do so.
So, at this point, we have...
I guess it just depends on how much you want to bond, how a dollar amount you're going to be bonding. Are you going to take in a 1.6 in his budget? Or are you going to take in a 1.6 plus the whatever else is budgeted to go to him, so... For this one year.
At this point, you have 5 million, 5 million 160 transferred into roads, 780,000 from inheritance, and then 3 million or 4 million for general. So, that's what you have going in, and that's over last year, about 2.3 million.
You know, I just happened to think of something. The reason we made these road transfers was because of our little, you know, that we didn't share some money with the city. And so, with this new budgeting process, is that even necessary anymore?
What, interlocals?
No, they have, they, um...
We had to transfer from inheritance to general and then general to roads.
But the reason, the reason that was is so that we didn't share our revenue.
Our levy.
That was part of it, and then the reason we...
But I didn't know if that rule changed with this whole thing that's going on right now.
The only thing that will change is you can go directly from inheritance to roads. You don't have to go through general. And that reason is the lid was the lid was why we had to transfer roads, then or transfer to general and then to roads.
So, now it can just be a straight transfer from general to roads without...
But there's a reason that we even have to make a transfer rather than just budgeting it direct to them. I wonder if that reason still exists. Now, we don't do any transfers from anything.
Well, then you'd have to levy it. You'd have to levy roads.
No.
Unless you, well, the bond would help, I mean...
No, that's not what I, we're merely thinking, and I'll, I'll have another conversation, maybe just with roads department or with Tyler or somebody another time.
I think if you levy your road fund, you have to share it? Or is that...
No, it's, yeah, so, anyway, I don't know if that's changed because of this, so it doesn't matter. We'll just keep going where we're at.
So, literally, it would just depend on the amount we chose to bond for a project, for projects, projects in a grade or whatever part of the program on an annual basis. I don't know. But that amount would not need to be then transferred.
Transferred.
Right, so that...
What does that do to the overall...
Well, you would actually, I mean, it would basically, uh, so you would bond, let's say, 2 million or whatever.
Roughly.
That would reduce what you need to, to come up with revenue, so that would be your tax for once.
So, and... But there, so that wipes out the 1.34?
But you gotta, where do you put in the bond repayment at then?
Well, then, yeah, then you have a bond repayment that you probably have to levy for, which, depending on what that...
But it would be less than the 1.34 right now.
Be less.
So, if we were looking at 2 million or, I don't know, what, a normal bond, five years or something that size?
The road bonds, we've done them in five years is what we have historically done.
If we start a schedule.
Yes.
A bonding schedule.
A known amount.
Known amount.
And we try to run and load those bond funds because we're budgeting for stuff we're going to get in April.
Is it going to be more than 600? It's not going to be more than 600,000.
Probably not for a 2 million if you were doing a 2 million.
Front-loaded, yeah.
Right.
Half a million.
So, that's 1.4 in October.
That we've saved.
Exactly.
Right, which takes...
Yeah. Then we, we need to truly discuss, we need a sinking fund. So, do we take that exception? And if we do, what does that look like? Over what timeframe?
Do we even need to take the exception?
If we have 2 million in the building fund, we take a million out of that.
And she's got a half million coming January from a T-bond, T-note.
Well, that's already built into your cash flow.
Yeah, that's already projected revenues.
So, that doesn't, that doesn't add your revenues, it just...
It just is freed up.
It's freed up, yes.
Turn on your mics, please.
They are on.
Oh, your guys' mics, thank you. Cheryl, don't look so thrilled.
Be brave, Cheryl, be brave.
Okay.
What, what is the amount that roads had budgeted for resurfacing?
I think it was 1.8.
I don't have that.
Six.
1.6.
Okay, county roads, 48, I have some more here.
Becky, was one of, the roads was one of the departments that did not...
No, 1.879.
Submit and updated by just...
1.879.
So, it's in our original packet.
This is a requested amount for roads, for resurfacing. I'm on page 48.
50.
Yeah, number 50, by-tumulus servicing line item, 1.879.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, so this is for our simpleton, so Susan, so...
Yep, that was a 280,000 increase from last year, right? It says on there.
Yeah. But if you do the, if you did a $2 million bond, that is an exception.
No, that's not an exception. It just adds, it just, it's just adds to your revenue. So, you have 2 million dollars in revenue.
It doesn't count as an exception.
You don't, you don't use, it, it's different than the lid where it did count as an exception. Basically, what this is, is you only use exceptions that you need. We're trying to get out of doing exceptions by doing the bond. So, what would happen is you'd have a $2 million additional revenue to road, a road fund. And then you would have a payment based on what that schedule is.
Well, I guess the short, I mean, what I'm getting at is, if we did, if we assume the $2 million by-tumulus overload, overlay project, okay, what's that due to this $1.3 million budget authority?
It takes it out of his, it takes 1.789, not his budget. Doesn't it?
So, that, does that fix this?
Yes.
Can we go into the road improvement fund rather than the county road fund? So, the cash can go somewhere else. Our repayments are scheduled in the road bond fund.
Because, because I guess, and I, I was here a long, long, long time ago on the other side of the table, and I know how frugal the departments have always been. They were then and they are now. So, rather than take a step backwards as far as that trust and that carryover that's been traditional. I mean, every department's done this. They've always rolled over money without exception, I believe. I mean, they've done a good job. So, what I'm saying is, rather than try to trim back this, because I don't think there's a lot of excess in any of that either. So, because they've tied our hands as far as protecting our flank with the budget authority, we have no choice but to, I think, hold the line on where we are on requisitioning revenue, because otherwise we're going to, we're going to be parking motor graders and, and doing some reductions in force in various departments as people time out or retire or whatever. So, I'm not so interested in walking back the projected budget. I'm interested in if we can keep this number, this 1.3 number in the budget with the bond and shift that, that...
So, that would add, so it would add $2 million to your essentially revenue, reducing the levy by 2 million, which would get you down below your authority, which is where you want to be. And if you could just shift where, where those expenditures are coming out of, like, if you want to put it out of road improvement as opposed to roads, but wherever that 2 million goes. Then you would be bonding, and then you would be adding to the road bond fund an amount, let's say, 400,000. I don't know what the payments...
Well, I guess I'm looking at trying to protect...
What you have right now.
The tax authority as much as we can.
Yes.
Is what I'm at, that's what I'm asking.
Yeah.
How do we protect the tax authority we have without shooting ourselves in the foot again? Because they have slapped every county board right in the chops with this damn program. I'm sorry, but that's what they've done. And so, every fiscally responsible county board across the state is being penalized now because we protected our revenue option but didn't exercise that option. And now we don't have that. So, my question is, because we, they have made, given us no choice, how do we keep this number at the maximum amount we can and still adopt a budget that's within the parameters of the statute?
You just add the $2 million to revenue, which would reduce your levy by 2 million.
Does that expense come out of the road department budget?
The expense for the bonds?
The repayment.
The expense, but the amount of money that is going to be spent for resurfacing roads.
It's not, the, the road resurfacing would come out of the bond. The property tax request would go down by the 1.3. We don't want to take a full 2 million out of the property tax request because we have to budget for the payment of the bond. On the other, on the other hand, I'm looking at protecting our ability to, to do business, that could be monies we insist, well, it's in your budget, but we don't wanna spend it, right? We don't wanna spend it.
As long as we have that conversation, right.
As long as we have that conversation, so I'm, I'm on board with having the conversation today on the initial budget number that they have submitted, but on the other hand.
And then.
If, if they don't spend it, that will just boost our cash reserve going into next year, correct?
That's exactly what I'm driving at.
Okay, so that's the, yeah, that's, that's what I'm saying, for, for instanding, not spending.
And we just have to say, wait a minute, we don't think you need that.
Yeah, look, I, I think we need to keep our budget authority.
It should stick in the first problem on the short pole, 'cause we start with our cash flow.
But I guess I would encourage the board too to think about, we, we probably need to talk to a bonding agent and find out, like, you know, if we budget, but.
Exactly.
Bond for three years of projects or four, yeah, whatever, I mean, rather than one year at a time, I think we need to look.
I like that.
Well, I think we probably need to get that on the agenda rapidly.
Longer, you know, since we took, since we took.
So, good.
So, uh, DA Davidson was here two months ago.
That's a great way to do it.
No, it's probably been four or five months since it's been in.
If we call DA Davidson today, they'll make sure they're available for next one base meeting.
Yeah.
They have very good information to share with us, uh, again, I think we had participated in a couple of conversations with NICO. On the difference between taking exceptions and bonding.
I like.
And DA Davidson came in, Sherry, you were in there, um, Susan, were you part of that meeting?
I don't think so.
Uh, Becky, Jerry and I. I think Jason was here also, and it was a good conversation, and I felt like they really contributed to my confidence in feeling like bonding projects was much better than taking the exceptions.
Yeah, Jason.
If you.
So we can reach out to them.
If you leave, if, if, if at the end of the day, that road budget stays, if that's a leg up on the rollover, you can create your cash reserve.
Yes, every little bit helps.
That's just the responsibility of this board, to make sure that they're being fiscally responsible on that.
Okay.
Takes care of your cash flow.
Budget increase, and, and if they can't prove it out, then we carry it over. Right? Rather than just say, is it in your budget? We always do that, well, we're all guilty of saying, well, is it in your budget? Yeah, okay, so here you go, well, maybe not this time. Joe?
No, I, I agree, I think that we need to have that conversation and say, it is not, you know? So, we need to be honest with Jason.
Absolutely.
What our intents are.
I agree that communication is gonna be really, really important going forward, and making sure that maybe we have some additional workshops where we're all in one room. And we can have the same conversations, because, um, it's not just Rhodes that I feel that applies to, it's, it's every budget department, everybody submitting a budget to us.
Although.
Knowing when the revenue's coming in and when we can do our big projects will really help with the cash flow.
But, you know, when you look at bridges and trades, they don't have a choice, 'cause their budget is their payroll, you know, so, I mean, eighty percent of the departments don't have that luxury.
Yeah, it's payroll.
Roads does, uh, a little bit, law enforcement does, not very much, but, you know, most of them are, it's payroll.
Yep.
That's what it is.
For, sure, which is the biggest part of everybody's budget, but there are, you know, as far as ordering supplies, we focus on the big budgets because they're the big budgets. But every department has some flexibility on when they choose to spend part of their budget, and I don't feel like as. A board member that I've done a good job in communicating on my committees with Booker and Jason about, you know, when the revenue's coming in and when they should be doing these projects, so. I added that to my list.
So, so for, so we're out, right now, in my understanding, and I'm probably not, that if we take a two million dollar bond, okay? Issue a two million dollar bond or get the money for that. We, and we, we can look at other budgets, but, you know, we're really running short on time.
We are.
So, our budget, the way it is right now, at least on paper, works.
We got, we have three issues, okay? We have the issue of our tax request authority being over by the one point three, the bond takes care of that.
Yes.
Um, and provides an amount to have a payment.
Yes.
For the bond, yeah.
For the bond.
For the bond.
The other issue is a sinking fund, because we have a cash flow situation with regard to, we have a budget that starts in July. But most of our tax revenue doesn't come in until April, so we have essentially most of the year. That we are trying to pay expenses where we don't have the revenue there.
Right.
So we've gotta, we've gotta address that situation.
That helps.
Part of that is with.
The bond.
The.
The bond helps address that because that brings revenue into us in a pot, early, right now, we've got the money in the pot right now, once that bond issue is there. The payment goes out over the four or five years, but the pot is there, and if we agreed that we're not gonna spend it, doesn't that help with that timing?
It partially addresses, partially addresses.
Not long term.
Inheritance tax is probably gonna go away.
Mm-hmm.
We've got investments that have some of that money tied up now, um. We have a need for a sinking fund to cover about three months of operating capital. A healthy one is about ten percent of our overall budget, a month is, we're spending, what, two million?
Two to two and a half.
Two, two point five million dollars a month in expenses, whether it be payroll, claims, what, all of it.
All of it.
That is in line with roughly the six, six point five million is roughly ten percent of our budget. We need to find a way, two million is part of that, we've gotta find a way to address the rest of the sinking fund, over time, it's not gonna all be done now.
I agree with that.
The other issue, we still need to scrutinize, and, and I, I agree, our departments are frugal with the tax dollars. We've seen, seen some increases in the budget, uh, request from them, uh, that need to go, we still need to go through, Rhodes being one of them.
Uh, there's several, I have a list, Rhodes is one of them, uh, the Public Defender's Office, I think they're, uh, asked when at thirty.
I, I did the percentages there from budgeted to budgeted.
Thirty-eight percent, I wanna say.
Hmm, I, you, you gotta go budgeted to budgeted, you can't go actual to budgeted, that, that's huge dollars.
Right, I think I did go budgeted to budgeted.
Uh, this Public Defender, he was only five point five percent.
Where did I get the thirty, oh, it was thirty-eight thousand it increased.
Yes.
He had two long-term employees retire, and so I wouldn't think for payroll increasing.
Well, the one employee only drew a salary of about a tenth because he wasn't putting the hours in, so if you look at the one that retired, he only had a few hours in that. Working for Bob here the last three or four months, so he wasn't getting.
I must have missed that, because I, yeah.
Yeah, well, Kent, uh, if you look, he, his, looked at the last couple of months, how much he drew out of there, it was nothing.
Yeah.
And he, he, I, I think he hired two new, but I think he's already lost one.
He's lost one.
Hmm.
He had one that already went.
And he might be losing another.
Yeah.
Okay.
So those are some of those discussions we need to have, let's go ahead and continue on with that, 'cause I, I think you're on the right track.
I mean, when you take a look at the sheriff's office, we're four hundred and, no, three hundred and sixty-five thousand-ish roughly increase for both the sheriff's office and the jail. I'm, I'm just, I'm curious as to what these increases are, and I think that there's questions that need to be asked, if they can justify and support and defend it, okay. But. Whole situation with the legislature and the, what was passed has completely changed and turned everything on its head from what we've done for decades. And this year more than any other year, we need to be scrutinizing to ensure where we know where our base is moving forward, so.
With that, I'm hearing we need to make a list of department heads that we wanna have come in next Monday and work with us on their budgets, so Rhodes. Sheriff and jail, same guy.
I mean, our own, our own budget, county board, we're asking for twenty-three.
Five.
Twenty-three thousand five hundred more than what we.
For what? Flat, flatline it.
Uh, we have a salary resolution that was built.
Yeah.
So there's, um.
You can.
That, a lot of that covers the resolution, I think this is the last year, twenty twenty-six is the last year that that four-year resolution encompassed.
That's about three percent of it.
So if we're gonna reduce, it's gonna be for the previous, for upcoming years.
And, and I'm, I'm not arguing, but I'm just also saying, you're, you're, when you, when we start cutting, we're cutting our budget authority.
For budget, but we, we.
For next year.
For next year.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, exactly.
So, I mean, I'm not, I'm just saying.
You're, you're being penalized once again.
Yes.
For being frugal.
Being frugal.
For being frugal, so I mean, it's.
So that was back to my point about, okay, so challenge that, okay, do we need all that, can we carry over a bigger number? And stop asking the question this year, is it in your budget, is it necessary, because we're trying to protect our.
I think we still need to know.
That's fine, that's fine.
Where that.
And, and, yeah, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not arguing, I'm just, I'm just saying, we gotta start thinking further out.
Where there could be built in.
No, but. Well, that's, yeah, that's what's, that's what's.
Unfortunately, I mean, they put us in this.
That's, that's what's so, uh, counterintuitive to this whole thing, is.
Yes.
Everybody wants to save money, we've, we've tried to save money for years, as you say, historically, this board's been a bunch of skinflints. I know, 'cause I worked for them forty years ago.
And we.
And it's taken us backwards.
And this is taking us backwards, and so every time we go, well, we're gonna cut this and cut that, to what end? I'd rather, I'd rather challenge them during the budget cycle and make, and give them a heads up right now that, if you don't need to spend it, don't. But we, we're trying to protect your flank with budget authority, I don't see other, I don't see any other way to do it now. It's just, uh, it's just ridiculous.
So, I'm, I'm trying to figure out where this leaves Susan and I to go forward, I mean, the bonding stuff is kind of a separate issue, that will have to.
That, so that, that'll have to be determined, and then.
Yeah.
So if you do end up cutting the budget and you still wanna do the two million dollar bond. You still need to probably budget to get up to that one point, or that eighteen million.
That's kinda my point.
To protect that next year.
That's kinda, that's exactly my point.
Yes. Which you could put into, you know, I mean, if there was a, you could put it into a sinking fund, just whatever excess you have at that point, possibly.
The only way to protect what we can do as far as providing services and good roads and protection, which is our statutory requirement. Is to protect that budgeting authority.
Yeah.
They have created the exact opposite of that.
What they probably wanted to do.
Of their, of, of the intent, they somehow think that all these outlawing county budgets are just in excess, and they're not. Yes, you can, you, you can identify certain counties that are taxed and spent a lot of money over the last time that I've been around this, but. When you go outstate and you know this, Susan, you deal with other entities, that's not the, that's not the way they operate, they just don't. But. The little counties are getting hit, by the way, just like the big ones out here, they're losing a couple hundred thousand, that's huge to a county that's got five hundred, uh, residents.
Yes.
You know, so, so back to your, didn't mean to interrupt.
So what, what other groups we're gonna have come in, uh, miscellaneous general.
That's gonna be a function of the bond of Rhodes, probably, we'll get that, I mean, that's just.
That'll, yeah, that'll come down because you won't have the transfer if we bond.
Transfer transfers.
And I, I believe Becky found about a hundred thousand.
I, I, I did, but I mean, I, I, the, last, like I said, the, that has substantially, I've decreased too, but the, already that light of stuff keeps going up, so.
Right, right.
That's.
And your lawyer fees are gonna keep going.
Yeah, those only go one way.
Yeah.
We had some eye-popping ones come around our table today for a month, I can't believe the payments that we made.
That's, that's been normal for a couple of years now.
Yeah, it's, they're just getting higher and higher every year.
So is there any broadcasting we can, I mean, I could look at it and see just what happened, but, like. We could play with some numbers too, I guess, to see what.
I think everybody agrees we need to keep that authority as high as we can get it without using exceptions.
Protect our taxes. I don't see.
So maybe we can figure out, kinda run some scenarios, what that does.
Every time you save money, you're rapid.
Some amount of bond to take these transfers out and.
Yeah, so you could either continue just to do the two million dollar transfer and.
But.
Whatever you think you have.
There's no doubt.
Extra budget authority, use it for.
Question should be asked, I'm not disputing that at all. The overall.
Cause we'll probably have to take at least one interest payment as an exception. If we, if we would bond now.
We're not doing ourselves any favor for the next one second.
And we'd have the money saved by October, November, I mean, we're gonna have one interest payment for sure in this, this budget year, I would think. It'll probably be interest only, I think that's what we did last time, the first year, they just gave us an interest only payment on the bonds for that first budget year.
That's what I seem to recall.
Helped us out, and then we started budgeting an interest payment and a principal payment for the next, but.
So.
You might as, you might as well figure out what that principal and interest payment's gonna be though.
Well, that's what we used to, yeah, to forecast on the road, yeah.
Yeah.
And then it just gradually gets less each year, correct?
Yeah, you kinda start with a high amount because you're budgeting for money you're not gonna get for till next spring, so you wanna make sure you always have enough to be, oh.
Yeah, mm-hmm.
Traditionally, they've always had payments made in December. So you need to budget enough so you're collecting ahead of time, and, uh, have that money in there by December, which is why we have to front load that levy pretty high just to get that.
Four fifteen, we spent five forty.
You guys, we changed that last year.
Budget that, so then we have to look at, if we only have an interest payment this year, then that's gonna affect everything next year, because you're gonna increase that.
Huge increase.
So if we have, if we have budgeted for this year, the principal and the interest payment. And it's not all going to the payment, are we cash ahead starting next year?
Yeah, then it will start building that fund up faster.
Exactly.
So that would probably, if you only have an interest payment, that might be a good thing to do is just, you know, start budgeting more this year to start.
I mean, we might as well start with that being the baseline, and that's just what we plan on.
In the bond fund, there's always principal, interest and future requirements, we've always budgeted that way.
We budget so that there's gonna, yeah, I just kind of project everything for the next three or four years or so, about like a three weeks.
Becky, can we reach out to Paul at DA Davidson and see if they can come in?
Yes, so, how, what direction on that, you want me to reach out to him, you want him to come, try to come next week, do you want?
Hey.
Uh, we probably need, well, I'm, like I said, you guys probably need to figure out what.
The clock's ticking, we've gotta get this figured out, because our hearing we just set was, it's in.
Yeah, we have got to get this figured out.
Three weeks.
Three, with three more meetings, so.
Yeah, three more meetings. For me personally, I would appreciate Paul being here and presenting and answering the questions.
And if he can, let us know that we can do a voice thing.
Yeah, we can.
Yeah, if he can, yeah, if he can't be here, we can.
Yeah. So, that, we're gonna start with that, did we make a decision, are we gonna ask, invite certain department heads in?
Yes, yes.
It's just, we, I, I, I need to know what the increases are.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
So let's invite sheriff, uh, the sheriff.
Okay.
Jason from Rhodes, um, Tammy and I'll sit down today after the meeting, if you have time, and look at the county board's budget.
Well, hold on.
That was a seven.
Sheriff normally provides a letter.
Yeah, it's, it's one in there.
He did, he had, he had two, he had an original one and he had one after the union agreement was signed.
And when he did respond to our request for cuts, that he, he felt there were no cuts to be made, that his request was all for. Needs, not wants.
Cause he had to submit before the union agreement was signed.
Correct.
I, I tend to agree with the message Kent's said a couple of times, um. The more we trim, it's just gonna lower our starting point, this is the one year, this is our baseline for many years to come.
Yes.
We, we no longer have the luxury of only worrying about this year, we have to think about. Next year and the year after that, and the year after that, that, the new legislation has changed everything.
It, it literally changed everything.
Everything, and so we are pretty much being, um. Forced, for lack of a better term, um, to do it their way, and so I, I feel like any reductions we make at this point really isn't gonna pay off.
The only thing you could really do is put it into like the sinking fund, if you had extra, you could.
But we can. If we had extra, and, and that's the point Kent was addressing, is if there's extra, then that helps us build up that cash reserve.
It does, yes.
And, and that's the point Kent was addressing, is if there's extra, then that helps us build up that cash reserve that we so desperately need.
Yeah.
We, we have to start that this year. We can't put it off any longer.
Sure, super.
So, I, the sinking fund is established by a resolution. I got some types of wording from NACO. Do we want to just go ahead and do that resolution?
I think to get it on, we have to have the fund created in order to have it in a budget, so.
Yes. Yeah. They, they did share a template with us during that one, so.
Just, you gotta put it in there, right?
Yeah.
But we got it there.
Yeah, in order for it to be there.
Tyler, Tyler, can you share that with Tyler, Becky, if he wasn't included in the original email?
Yeah, we'll figure it out. I'll put this in your resolution on.
Okay.
Tammy.
Susan will work with Susan. Our little team will work with Susan. Figure out what we need to do.
I thought I had some Chris.
Becky, you have any three alligator clips? Chris needed a bigger one.
I could use.
I don't know how big it is.
All I have is the little itty bitty.
I need a semi-truckload one.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, are we at a, are we at a good point? We know where we need to go from here. Lots of good conversation. I feel like establishing the sinking fund, um. And making a decision about going the direction of bonding as, as opposed to taking exceptions. We can, we can still bring in department heads and have conversation just so they are on the same page with us. So, Sheriff Kramer, Jason Schultz from roads, any other department we want to talk to?
I know that Tom Gann's gonna wanna be talking to us.
I have had, I have had a conversation, so sure, let's get, let's get Tom in.
Do you want, not just weeds, like I said, he submitted some stuff today.
Yeah, I think they trimmed about, about everything that we, they were pretty conservative on their request to begin with and submitted a trim. I haven't looked at it yet.
Yeah, I, I, I have not looked at the trim. I printed it off, but.
There's not a lot you can save on those small budgets. I know that I ran one. There's just not a lot of room.
I, we had some budgets submitted that I had concerns that they were submitting too small of a request, which isn't a problem that I usually have. But I did have a great conversation with Crystal from District Clerk Court this morning. She is cutting two entire employees out of her department that she felt were no longer necessary due to changes. And so, that really helped hugely.
That's good.
Yep, yep.
Yeah, that was like fifty-three thousand dollars.
Which, which I really respect. The changes have been there year in the past, but she's really stepped up and.
Yeah. She really has. I was a little concerned, but she calmed my concerns this morning by a good explanation, and I feel like she's doing the right thing for that office.
Okay, I did visit with Michaela. We did have extension, did submit some cuts too, but their budget is so very close.
It's, oh, it is.
So, they're, the people are new. I cannot do anything with it. They graciously submitted them. I, I, I told Michaela, I just don't feel comfortable doing this.
They're, they, they broke two pennies together.
I know, and they were very gracious, but it's like, I, I just.
And where they're so new to the process, Becky and I looked at it with a fine-tooth comb and sent it back to them and said we weren't gonna accept their cuts, that we felt like it was better for them to have that in there and not use it if they can't, rather than going too conservative and regret it partway through the year, so.
Like I said, I don't really want IT to come in. I, I, I know enough about that to be dangerous, like what.
I wouldn't, I, I don't think you do.
It probably, we need to know what, we need to know what they're thinking.
I, I think so, yeah.
Well, I think I know what they're thinking. It's technology that's out of, it's obsolete. And you've, you've seen the briefings in past years about all the data breach issues.
Yeah, I don't.
That's, I wouldn't, I, without knowing specifics, I wouldn't, I wouldn't lean on that too hard myself.
Okay, well, I'll ask him what his increase in D V is that he needs in those two, in those two.
Except you.
Yes, yeah. I'd like to see the details on that at least and, and let him have some explanation. Okay, does anybody have anything else?
Thank you, ladies.
Thank you guys for joining us today. You're, you're a very vital part of this conversation, and you do a good job in educating me.
Susan will drive you to drink if you stick around long enough. If you don't already.
Cheryl doesn't look like she was real thrilled to get invited here today, but you, you may get invited back, Cheryl, so.
You'll tell us to.
All right, with, with that.